Good. Thank you. So recall the order, let me first of all wish everyone a very happy new year, safe new year. Last year was not the best, but we're hoping for better things in the future, so we'll get back to work. Any declarations of conflict on any of these applications?
I have conflict for number four, Sixth Fifth Street.
Sixth Fifth Street, okay. Anyone else? Okay. We have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I have a mover? Moved by Reg, seconded by Bobby. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. We also have adoption of minutes, minutes of planning board meeting on December the 7th, 2020. I assume you've had a chance to go through those minutes. Any anything arising from the minutes? All those in the motion. Moved by Councilor Cave, seconded by Shallen. Any discussion on that issue? No discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Business arising from the minutes. As you know, business arising from the minutes will move on to reports. First report for tonight is a variance at 47 Chestnut Street, BID number 357749, and Emily will be our presenter. It's all you, Emily?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, happy new year, everybody. Today, we're looking at a major variance application at 47 Chestnut Street. Here, the property owner, Stephen Larter, is proposing to construct a new single detached dwelling on the property. In order to allow this, he is looking for a major variance, so to reduce the minimum interior yard setback requirement of 1.83 meters to about 1.2 meters, so that's 4 feet. So pursuant to Section 3.9 of our zoning bylaw, the side yard setback variance is categorized as major in nature, so the planning board must consider it and make a recommendation to council. From there, council can approve or reject the side yard setback request. So just some background for you folks. First, this is just rendered views of the proposed dwelling. You'll see that in the attachments in your package as well, just so you can get kind of the look and feel for what they're proposing. You'll note the east elevation there, there's no window or door openings on that side, and I'll get into that a little bit later. So some background on the property itself and the surrounding area. So as you can see here, it's delineated red. It's an interior lot. It's located on the north side of Chestnut Street. It's about 251 square meters in size and has a frontage of about 8.7 meters along Chestnut Street. The property is zoned downtown mixed-use under our zoning and development bylaw and designated downtown for a year by the city's official plan. Just to note that on March 20th, 2019, a permit was issued by our office approving the demolition of existing two-story single detached dwelling on this lot. The property has since then, since the time of demolition, remained vacant. And we did issue a letter to the property owner on September 20th, 2019 regarding non-compliance with the demolition permit requirements. So specifically, there was non-compliance identified with changes in grade on site, expanded a previous area, and damage to the public sidewalk as well. So I went on site visit recently and I noted that the damaged public sidewalk has since been repaired. And in terms of neighboring properties, to the north, west, west, and south, those properties are zoned downtown mixed-use as well, similar to the subject property. And the properties to the northeast and east are zoned medium density, so R3. And according to provincial tax assessment records and just my observations when I visited the site, it's a mix of residential building types on adjacent properties, mostly medium to high-rise density. And then there's service property lots to the south area, too. So you can see further details on page three of my report there about what exists on those surrounding properties. And I just wanted to note as well, based on the lot rating plan that we received from the applicant, most recently updated today, and that was circulated to you folks as well, on the adjacent property to the west, 41 Chestnut Street, which is a triplex building, that has an existing interior side yard setback of about 10.7 meters from the boundary that shared with this subject property. And then 55 Chestnut Street, which is to the east, it's an apartment building currently under construction, and that has a setback of about 1.19 meters from the boundary that shared with the subject property as well. So in terms of notification, under Section 9.3, sorry, 3.9.3 of our zoning and development bylaw, it requires us to provide notification for property owners within 100 meters of the subject property. So we did circulate that notice, and we received in response to that three letters of objection, as well as one letter of support. So just to pull out some of the key themes in the letters of objection, they spoke to concern with the traffic impact on Chestnut Street, the impact of the proposed dwelling on the adjacent buildings to the east and to the west as well. They talked about the property being an undersized lot and concerns with that. Parking provision for this new dwelling, they're wondering how that would be provided. They talked about the accuracy of the lot rating plan, and I just wanted to note that the applicant has since corrected that in accuracy as well. And just the justification for the variance and whether it was in harmony with what's happening in the surrounding neighborhood as well. Our office also received a request for additional material in regard to the proposal, and the applicant did provide that material. It was circulated to those residents that asked for it. And our office also provided an additional two days for residents to review that additional material and provide written comments on that as well. So that was an extension to the public notification deadline. And in terms of the letter of support, it was from the apartment building, which is to the east, the owner of that property. And they noted support particularly given that there's no window or door openings that are proposed to face their property as well. And now just, oh, sorry, so this is the lot rating plan most recently updated today. They're showing trade, which would meet our bylaw requirements as well. So that's the lot rating plan. And just to get into the analysis, so when we look at our official plan policies, there's several there that support the proposed development. So in Section 3, specifically, there's policies that look for development that makes use of existing underground services that encourages infill development through such things as flexible zoning provisions. And there's an objective to encourage development in fully serviced areas as well. There's also the objective for new development that's harmonious with its surroundings. So based on my assessment, the proposed dwelling, it's making use of an existing vacant lot, and you've categorized it as infill residential development, so it's maximizing existing underground services. And it's located within 75 meters of our employment area, the 500 lot area. And it's also a low intensity development as well. Its footprint and type is less than the adjacent residential buildings, so it's not having an adverse impact on those adjacent lots as well. So it does conform with the policies and objectives of the official plan. In terms of the zoning, the proposed single detached dwelling is permitted on the property under the zoning bylaw provisions that apply. And when you evaluate the proposal against the applicable zoning regulations, you find that there is deficiencies in terms of lot area and lot frontage. However, there are regulations in the zoning and development bylaw that allow for the proposed lot area and lot frontage deficiencies on vacant lots, and I list that regulation there for you. And this same regulation states that where other applicable provisions of the bylaw cannot be satisfied, such as side yard setbacks, the development officer may apply procedures in the handling of a variance such as this. There's another regulation there that speaks to undersized lots, such as this, which states that no person who owns a lot held under separate ownership of adjoining parcels having less than the minimum frontage area required by this bylaw shall be deprived of the ability to make reasonable use of the lot. So since this proposal is for a low intensity use, it's on a vacant lot, and there's supportive policies in the official plan, it's our opinion as a department that the proposal represents reasonable use of the lot. And also to note that although the proposed side yard setback reduction is deficient relative to the zoning bylaw requirements, it is larger than the existing side yard setback on the adjacent lot, 55 Chestnut Street, based on the lot rating plan that we received as well. So in terms of privacy and views, the facing condition of that adjacent apartment building, it's not desirable from a view perspective. So there's large windows and sliding doors from that apartment building that are facing the subject property. However, this spacing condition would exist regardless of the major variance. And the applicant is also, as I mentioned earlier, they're not proposing any window or door openings on that wall facing the apartment building as well. So that allows for privacy for these facing events. And in terms of parking and access, the proposed dwelling, it'll be served by an integral garage, so it's integral to the dwelling, and it will generate limited traffic impact on Chestnut Street. So in our evaluation, it meets the parking requirements of the zoning and development bylaw. We also had Public Works comment on the proposed variance, and they just asked for the reduction of the driveway width to 3 meters, which would be something that would require through the permit approval process. So this is kind of the summary of the positives and the shortcomings based on our analysis. And to move along here to the recommendation, so based on all this, the Planning and Heritage Department recommends the approval of the interior side yard setback variance based on the following mission, so they maintain no window or door openings along that east of building elevation facing the apartment building, that no structures such as eaves gutters or footing are permitted to encroach into the reduced side yard setback, and the proposed driveway shall be reduced to 3 meters in keeping with the Public Works request. So that's all from me, and I welcome any questions or comments from you folks.
Thank you, Emily. Any questions of Emily from the boardroom?
Just want to clarify, you said there was already an existing dwelling on this property that they've taken down.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Emily, you mentioned there's parking in the garage itself, which is part of the building.
Yes.
Other than that garage, is there any space outside of the garage, that the driveway to Chestnut Street?
Yeah, there isn't. So in terms of the maneuvering area for that parking space, that would happen largely in the right way. But we had Public Works comment on that, and they didn't indicate there was any concerns with that. There's also no visitor parking requirements in our bylaw for single detached dwellings, so because of that, they're meeting the requirements in terms of parking.
So in the garage itself, it could never be converted to livable space?
They certainly have to go through the permit approval process for that, because they'd be adding, you know, livable area, prospory areas to the dwelling, but the way that it's situated in the dwelling right now is like integral to the dwelling, so it could be possibly converted at a later stage.
Thank you. Any calls?
Thank you. Thank you for that very thorough report. I just have a question, kind of segueing off on what you had said about, so the garage is, basically you drive into your driveway and you're in the garage, there's no little buffer zone outside of that. So that gives them the minimum standard that they need.
Yes.
So what happens if they get all settled in there and, you know, because we have a lot of struggles now with the residential parking. People claim, "Oh, I don't have any parking, so I get to have a residential parking pass." Because they already have that parking space, will they or will they not qualify for residential parking?
I can speak to any parking requirements that would apply to the driveway outside that property itself, but they will have to meet the providing one parking space to serve that property on site under the bylaw unless they want to seek approval otherwise.
Are we able to give that information?
Sure, absolutely.
That would be a police issue, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think a residential parking in Chestnut Street anyway, I think it's kind of, I'm not seeing like residential.
You can apply anywhere in the downtown area, can't you?
This is the downtown, because it's.
Yeah, it's downtown, it's huge.
It's just, it's zoned, a downtown mixed-use, but it's just normally used, so it's not technically.
Wrong block, yeah. We can check that, Emily. We'll check that. Anything else from Emily? Hearing none. Emily is the developer here, and if so, would you like to speak?
Yes, I'll have to check, though. Just bear with me one more minute.
Yes.
We're recommending for approval for the variance.
Yes.
Is this still going to be subject to public consultation as well?
No.
Once it meets the variance requirements, it's able to go again?
Yes.
Okay.
Providing counsel.
Counsel?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, but not a public meeting, not a public meeting. I thought you were gone, I looked over there, you were gone.
I mean, we.
Hi, Stephen, how are you?
Hey, I'm doing good, how are you doing, guys?
Welcome, welcome.
Thanks for giving me a couple minutes here of time.
No problem.
I just wanted to add that, you know, this wasn't a short process for me, you know, I know this lot, it's very narrow, we can't get around that. So it took me some time to come up with a plan that I thought would suit, one, both sides of the property, including suiting myself. So with the lot how it stands, as we know, is I'm only allowed to build a 16-foot wide property, the way that lot sits now, which, one, not very nice, two, is don't allow it anyway. So the minimum is 18 feet, which still isn't very nice in my view. So I was hoping to get that extra foot on each side to make it 20 feet. That way, it doesn't impact the Cave's side, which they have their driveway and then an extra four feet for us, which gives them lots of room, you know, and privacy. And then on the Holleran's side, they have a lot of windows and doors and stuff on their side, so I thought I would be respectful and not put any windows on the side of my building. And then that would make everybody happy, and then we can move forward and kind of everybody wins. So if I don't get this approval, I'll have to kind of go back and re-figure what else I can do with this property. If that is the case, of course I will do that, I'm hoping I don't have to, but I respect the decision that, you know, option that you guys made. Any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Larter? I think you're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Enjoy reading, appreciate it.
Do we have any members from the general public out there that would like to, please, speak? Thank you. Good afternoon, how are you?
Hello. Hi, Mike Cave, I have the property next door, 40 Chestnut Street.
Yes.
Thanks for letting me talk. Our only concern was basically for the entrance and degress of our driveway. We have three apartments that we need our tenants to be able to get in and out of, and not only that, but the snow removal of the parking lot in the back of our property. So we wanted to make sure this front garage, which is basically the entire front of the property, will allow easy entrance and degress without any problems getting onto the street or seeing what's coming from either side onto the road. And the only other thing besides that was the six, I believe the six-foot adjustment there, or the six feet that you asked for is.
Fire.
Fire? What is the purpose of the six?
Oh, just normal spacing between the.
Just normal spacing?
Yeah.
Okay. As long as it doesn't incur any sort of fire hazard or anything.
No.
Yeah, we're happy with that. We're glad someone wants to build something there, we just want to make sure our tenants are taken care of as well, because once that's up, you can't take it down.
Sure, yeah.
Just want to make sure that's, I don't know if there's any information or something we could get that would assure that we have an easy time getting in and out of our driveway.
I got to ask Mr. Trainor, can you address the snow clearing issue that Mr. Cave brought up?
So I will just say that in terms of anything that would occur in the right way, which is any maneuvering to and from that parking space, we had Public Works Department comment on that, and they didn't express any concerns with the maneuvering occurring in the Chestnut Street right away. So I think that kind of would speak to anything that would relate to snow removal or whatever.
Okay. And again, going back to the house that was there before, was that house that was there pre-devolution, was that beside your apartments? Or did your apartments go up? So was there issues at that point with?
Well, it was a different design, it was back more, and it had a driveway right next to ours, so in fact, we almost had.
So you're more concerned with the placement of where it is?
Right, yeah. If it's too close, we don't want any accidents or.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Thank you.
I think Emily has addressed that, that Public Works has their input to it. Okay? Thank you very much, thank you. Okay. Welcome there, Brown.
So do you need somebody to?
Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion that we move to accept staff's recommendation.
Okay, moved by Councilor Yankoff, seconded by Mr. Hamley, that the application for 47 Chestnut Street, the formative counsel for approval. Any discussion on the issue?
Question.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to Norwood Friar Drive, TB 1416305. We have Mr. Zilkey is going to take us through the material. Craig Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and happy new year to you and the board, a forthcoming or interesting year. So, starting off, the application for you tonight is a request to proceed to public consultation. That is to allow for the subject property to be re-designated to a modular housing residential designation from low-density residential designation, and then also to rezone the property R2, which is low-density, single zone to manufactured residential, sorry, manufactured housing residential zone. I believe the board probably remembers this particular zone. Staff did bring it through a set of zoning amendments back in July, and effectively what that would allow anyone with that entitlement to do is they could subdivide and create lots, particularly like such as this, concept subdivision, and it would permit for mini-home dwellings to be located along public streets. The way this zoning bylaw was previously set up was that you could create, the only way you were able to construct or move a mini-home onto the subject site was through the mini-home park or residential zone, and that was only subject to private streets. So now we moved forward from that, and we've left kind of private streets behind, we're looking at allowing mini-homes onto public streets, and so this is the first application, which inspired that zoning change to introduce this concept. So just to give you some orientation on what we're discussing, Norwood Road is the north-to-south road running here, Friar Drive up over here, Robin Avenue here. The proposal is to subdivide 59 lots within this area here, so this area remains perhaps for future development, but the applicant is here tonight. So this is the subject area itself, basically there will be a couple lots off of, with apps off of Norwood Road. And then there would be two, an extension of Friar Drive through this section here, which is dedicated road allowance, and then it would be connecting up to through this part here. So just so people are familiar with the site, kind of gone through, so viewpoint A is that standing from Norwood Road, and that would be looking southwest. And as you can see here, the subject property is basically a farm field right now, and it's currently being used and has been used for that in perpetuity, so. Then coming down to viewpoint B, so now we're on the, we just left Norwood Road and we're on Friar Drive, and as you can see here, this would be Friar Drive ensuring that residential portion, that neighborhood right here. And then moving forward, just down Friar Drive on viewpoint C, we can see that this would be the first access point into the development, right through here, and then it would connect up through here and then back to Friar Drive loop around this side here. And so that viewpoint is there, and as you can see, there's already public services in here. We have fire utilities, we have fire hydrant, and this would be the road connector. So that would be technically the Friar Drive extension. And finally, viewpoint D, which is the end where it connects and finishes with the loop is here, so as you can see, the subject property is basically a vacant farmers' field. The concept that they're proposing, the mini-home development concept, is this fall, so these are just some renderings the applicant submitted. So that's the first rendering of what they would be proposing, and then that would be another rendering of what they would be proposing, and so most of the mini-homes would follow some sort of design since that. So just for, again, clarification on the housing residential zone, the MHR zone, it permits also for single detached modular dwellings, and modular dwellings are basically prefab homes, similar to mini-home, but they're basically assembled on-site. So this zone would effectively allow for the development of any of those dwelling types on those properties, subject, of course, that they meet the minimum lot area and frontage requirements and all applicable setbacks. The one thing I wanted to note, that the sightings remain similar to the R1L, save and except furthers, reduce frontage air currents, and most likely reduce rear yard. So you usually have 25, 24.9-foot rear yard setback, in this case, maybe just under 15 foot rear yard setback. So that's just kind of gives you the idea and flavor of what this zone permits. Of course, the proposal itself, it right now is to construct 59 mini-homes. The owner would be selling the individual lot, so unlike a park where you would rent the space or rent the lot and own the mini-home, the owners would have the ability to both own the lot and also own the mini-home. So it provides another form of housing, something that's needed in the city, and so this is the outline, and again, the request tonight is just to proceed to public consultation on this proposal, on this redesignation or rezoning. And I. And I can answer any questions, thank you.
Councilor Yankoff?
Can I just address, Rob?
Sure, go ahead.
Question, Mr.? So the entire new subdivision area, do the, what's the difference between a modular home and a mini-home? I know, my idea is the mini-home is the old-fashioned, long kind of rectangular shape, whereas a modular, you see them in the Hamleys parking lot, that they come all constructed, but they, they don't look like that. So does that mean that they, people that buy the lot can have the option of the long rectangle or the
Yeah. So through the Chair, Councilor Yankoff, yes, basically, the applicant is here, they can provide more specificity on the sale and purchasing and what people could do, but in fact, this zone would allow for both modular and/or mini-home. So modular, you're right, they can construct that, or they can bring it on-site and assemble it. Mini-home, they just move it on-site usually, and those are the longer, and they're usually skinnier
Right.
in size. They're usually put on a pad as well, and then there's a bunch of requirements under the MHR zone that requires like skirting and upkeep and things of that nature, but yes, that's effectively
And just as a follow-up, this was, when we brought that byline to place in July to change to be built, this is a real opportunity for opening up the ability for affordable housing, is it not? There's the, I mean, because a lot of times you can, you can get yourself into a home like this a little bit more affordable, is it not?
I would divert to the applicant who deals with home sales and purchase. I would just, though, just caution the board that the department doesn't see this as a affordable housing. Affordable housing, as everyone knows, is a certain incentive, and it has reduced subsidization through CHC or residential housing authority. So this wouldn't be considered affordable, but it certainly would be another segment or another offering to residents, another type of housing typology.
Yeah, my apologies, wrong wording for it, but more so, more, what would be the right order then for maybe a more cost-effective way for a first-time homeowner?
I believe the applicant, in his, one of his letters, was that it'd be comparable to say, an apartment building or a mortgage payment. But again, I would divert to him, since he deals with sales of these
Sure. Thank you.
Councilor Kay?
Yeah, thank you. So of course, I represent this area, and when I read this in the package yesterday, I made sure I put this out to my residents, I looked, and I wanted to know what their thoughts were about this proposal. I did get both, but I did get people that would say, you know what, it's a great opportunity for people starting out to have opportunity to maybe afford something a little bit more affordable, what they would mean as affordable, from some people. But there were a lot of other concerns, of course, brought up by residents who've lived there most of their life, and now they're looking at being encroached upon by potentially what people would consider a mobile home park, right? Because they're land-owned and, you know, explaining that to you for sure. But there's people that have invested their life there and necessarily next to a rental home. So that's that side, but they also brought up some really, you know, some good points. We have to look at things like the increase in traffic in that community, in this closed community, and you're in fifty-nine more modular homes with probably one or two, more likely two cars per home, because you're not living right in downtown city. That's a lot. And also, there's a stream. I don't know if you guys are aware, that there's a stream that runs through there, where there's an awful lot of wildlife, we have foxes in dens, we have, it runs into Andrews Creek, and we already have enough issues with what's going on with our runoffs and ourselves come out of development that's happening up there as is, so that is definitely concerning if we are looking at moving this kind of a project forward. Want to make sure that we're doing it environmentally friendly.
Through Councilor Kay, as for everyone's knowledge, the easement that Councilor Kay was referring to runs from this side and then goes down here to a culver. So it's proxy around that area, that's the stream.
Yeah, I've just had a lot of residents would say that there's foxes in their dens and stuff that's set in spring, and it's in through this, and they've sent me history dating back to eighteen hundreds, where they're invested, for sure, they're paying attention to what's happening, so I just wanted to
Were the foxes out there that were born in eighteen hundred?
No, they had maps from
Sure.
their grandfather, Thomas Young, and how they advertised it to lease in eighteen thirty-four.
Thank you.
I didn't do a research. I'm a smart business.
Robert, I think people would see this as an opportunity, who can't afford it, what we refer to as a stick house, to build up some equity rather than just pay and rent at the end of thirty years, having nothing to show for it, at least they would have these properties in most cases.
No, they don't, they don't own the property?
Yeah, they can own the property.
Yeah, that's what they do.
So they have the property and a dwelling, something to show for it, or something to use as leverage fifteen years down the road to buy this pick home, you know? I think it has a place in their
So Mr. Chair, it's, if I could, it's similar to what's up, Acadian Drive, River Ridge Drive, Seipine Drive?
There's a major thing there that they can't own the lot.
They don't own the lots, but in this, the Hamleys aren't allowed to buy the lot, but those are modular. Have you been up to that subdivision?
I have been.
So that's similar what we're looking at?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, no, I know that. And it's going with public.
Shalen?
Yeah, just curious, Robert, so is the developers intention to build each one of these and then sell them? They're not selling lots to people who can then move their own home? They're going to build them all and then sell them like that? Is that, do you have any?
Again, I would probably defer to the applicant himself, especially on the sale structure. You don't really get involved in that itself. All I can say is that he is going to be offering the lots for sale, so you can own the piece of property, and then of course, you know, he does supply the mini-homes, modular homes that someone could then purchase and move on that site, but again, I would defer to the owner.
Yeah, I mean, I think to your comment, I think it makes of both, I mean, more of the residents, yeah, of the fifteen acres.
Yeah, for sure.
Hazel?
So following up on that, then it can be a mixture of mini-homes or modular homes, it wouldn't matter.
Correct. So essentially, the zone would permit for either a single detached stick-built, modular home or mini-home, provided that they meet the minimum lot area and frontage requirements, because those requirements are less in some instances for like mini-homes, for example, because they're smaller in nature, and then like a stick-built home, you know, you would be constrained to the size of the lot you would purchase, because the lots do vary in area, anywhere from like seven, a little over seven thousand square feet to about, I believe it's twelve or thirteen thousand square feet. So there is a lot of variations on lot sizes and frontage, but effectively, if you can meet those, you could also put a stick-built or modular mini-home.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to comment on Councilor Kay's statement, that in the eighteen hundreds, urban sprawl also started, so the animals get customized to it.
Robert?
Robert, I'm looking at the map, but I'm just trying to figure out, is there any, there must be green space planned, is there?
So part of the subdivision application is that the owner would have to dedicate ten percent for green space, so in its development, and then that would have to be, again, discussed with parks, but that would be a standard requirement through the subdivision process. Anything that, you have graded the fourth lots, you have to
There's currently a playground on Friar Lane, but there would have to be more, like ten percent would have to be in this seventeen acre development.
Yeah, it would have to be like within the actual subject property, where they would be subdivided.
Is that a city-owned property, that park?
I don't know if it is city-owned or not.
Yeah, that's your, what the community agrees and stuff for the environment community, that there's a piece, they do own part of that, is that it? But there is city-owned park management.
Rich?
In the undeveloped part, front, who owns the section to the right there, the downwards, is there one out there?
Oh, I'm not sure.
And how would you be able to develop that, with a road going through it?
That would be the only possible way, would be to develop with frontage on the road. Yeah, like we've had situations where people try to argue on highways, but we didn't do that. It has to be actually with access from a public street or public road. Part of whatever, part of the development as well in the future was that there's this connector here.
Okay.
Right? So effectively, this portion of the property was going to be developed. There would have to be like some sort of agreement where a road was brought in so that this lot itself could also be developed, but then you get into situations where they would have to then design their lots layout as well as the street connecting to, connecting to the main street on Friar Drive.
So the blue line, is that the old path?
So this blue line, that's actually, that's the water itself, that's just a water line that goes up. So the water line crosses the highway and then just go up through this field here, which is just the servicing layout itself. But that is the servicing line that is utilized by, like all the properties on Friar Drive, and it connects back up to Norwood Road.
So where's the only entrance into that parcel lane?
It would operate by that water line. Yes, well, through here, your main entrance for the proposal would be here and here. This is a loop-around road that eventually finds its way back up to here, that's Robin. And then in the subdivision proposal, he's deleted lots with each individual access points off Norwood Road. So the main access point, I guess, into this community, this backfield here, would be the extension of the road through here and then why you're there, which you can see right? Friar.
Okay, any more questions, Robert?
I'm just kind of thought of this, but is there ways to say, instead of having all mini-homes, that you can have so many, I know it's kind of zoned everyone, but so many mini-homes, so many modular, like a better mix of a development in that area if we're looking at that, is there a place to put some stipulations in that?
There would be, council would have the ability, like as with any rezoning application, to attach conditions, so if there was specific conditions, I guess, the council would like to see like a ratio of different dwelling types, something that could be done through contract development agreement.
Okay. Robert, before we move on to the developers here, and I imagine he is.
Yes.
Is Mr. Hamley here?
I am.
Would you ensure, Robert, that, I think our package that we received for tonight's meeting, I think it lagged behind your information stream, because you kind of lost, or I did anyway, I kind of lost you after attachment B, I think I was with you to that point, and then C was a diagram, but it goes right into modular home, the, it's into modular homes, pictures of modular homes, that way, yeah, those two there.
Yeah.
There was some slides you had that we were missing, I believe. How many do you have with maps on them? I have two here.
Yeah, these, I did multiple copies of the subdivision plan with the viewpoints. So for example, when we're looking at this area, that viewpoint's taken from, from that position here. So it's just, all I did was I just duplicated the subdivision plan and just kind of moved around.
Okay, all right. I just, when the package goes out for the public meeting, if it's going to be held, I would like to have it as clear to the councils as possible. It cuts down a lot of confusion and questions and concerns.
And likely including the images, too?
Yes, yeah.
Because they're not in this package.
Everything is helpful, yeah. So I think we're okay with Robert, so could we invite, oh.
I'll move it.
They're going to have, see, the developers are going to come in for a question. If, Mr. Hamley there?
Mr. Hamley is here. He wasn't planning on presenting, he was planning on presenting at the public meeting, but
Okay, if he wants to do that.
If you wish to discuss.
Okay, then the members of the general public, if they're ready, want to break raise the public meetings.
I, we have not received any submissions from anyone from the general public.
Okay, we're okay? All right, I'm looking for a motion then. It's been moved by Councilor Yankoff, seconded by Councilor Ken, Bob Kenny, that the, the development at Norwood Road, Friar Drive, PID forty-one sixty-three oh five, be forwarded to council with the recommendation to proceed to the public consultation process. Any questions, any discussion on that, get to the motion?
I'm just going to state that I'm okay with public consultation, because you do gather more information than I want that to be.
Well, that's perfect, yeah.
It is a public consultation, well, I have to make that to a vote now?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions?
All those in favor? All those opposed? Is there any question? Sorry, I interrupted. Are there any questions on our one and a half? I'll just go to the subject, if any questions. Okay, thank you. Okay. What's the count on the vote first? We can have questions after the vote, I assume, like the
It was unanimous.
Was it unanimous?
Want to vote again?
Sure. Hands for vote for approval. Nobody was against, so whatever is here, whatever is present, zero. This was the developer?
Yes.
Any questions, the developer?
Nope, not right now.
Let's move on to the application. Thank you. And Robert, you're on the mat again.
All right, so this is a lot consolidation. Essentially, it's two light industrial zone properties, and the applicant's just looking at consolidating both lots in order to construct a commercial sign business. So this area is in Sherwood Industrial Park, Cobra Drive, and Paramount Drive. Cobra runs through here and then up, Paramount's right through here, and these are the two subject lots that they're just looking at consolidating. So the use is permitted in the zone, and they're working on a concept plan for the designers, but they have nothing to submit at this point. They just wanted to see what law consolidation, so they were able to have more property in order to construct a larger building. The analysis is in your reports. Essentially, the consolidation properties are not traditionally, it's conferences in industrial zone park, and then any development would be keeping with the area of nature, which is industrial. So again, it's pretty self-contained in its own right. And yeah, any submission for a building permit, it would have to comply with the zoning model requirements, so the signs, commercial warehouse slash retail, use is permitted, so they would just then have to meet all their setbacks, which I believe they should be able to with, to consolidate lots. And I take it you might have dismissed.
Councilor Yankoff?
Thank you for your report, Robert. Did this require hundred meters letters?
No, it did not. To Councilor Yankoff, the hundred meter requirement comes into effect when you're surrounded by R3 or R4, so you get into those types of law consolidations. Generally speaking, that's because usually there's a body of residential uses, so those properties are circulated. In this instance, it's a self-contained industrial park, so there's no requirements in the zone.
Okay, great, thank you.
Big lots, too, I don't
Yeah, they are huge, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you look, I know that Robert cites the official plan, but there are sections in the starting point of the official plan that talks about harmonious development. This is definitely harmonious development.
Yep.
Very in sync with the
I think the nursing
The industrial neighborhood.
I think the nursing union, the pharmaceutical people, and the medical people, the United States. Two, two, yeah, it's a lot of
And Red Cross.
Red Cross, yeah, great in the world. Yeah, it's quite a variety of organizations. Okay, Rich? I'll move to Okay. It's been moved by Reg, and seconded by Julie, that the law consolidation application on lot zero seven dash two four and zero seven two five, Cobra Drive, be approved. All those in favor? Or I'm sorry, any question or discussion on the motion? Be none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Does it need to, or nine, whatever it is? Moving on to our, oh, I'm sorry. We don't, we don't have anyone here that can speak. Okay. Moving on to our last application for the evening, Sixth Prince Street, I think Shalen, you're, Shalen, you're going to take a break? Your final one, Robert?
All right.
Go for it.
So we have another law consolidation. Effectively, this law consolidation is to consolidate the main property which houses the founder's food hall and market here, with this piece of parcel here, it's land that surrounds the building itself. As you can see, planning board, there's a boardwalk that extends to the main boardwalk here. The city does have an maintenance agreement on it, so we do maintain that boardwalk, so from a maintenance perspective and snow clearing. But other than that, the applicant is proposing to utilize that boardwalk to effectively create an outdoor amenity space. So there will be essentially an extension of the founder's food hall and market, and this is just the street view here. The portion that we're looking at consolidating is really this lot here, and the amenity area is going to be located and confined to this location of the lot. So that's kind of the survey plan itself, and how that lot is separate from the main principal lot, and this is the amenity area that they're proposing. So you can see here, there's a couple of fire pits, some seating, benches, more seating. There's a bandstand here for live music, and then I believe this is an extension of Upstreet Brewery, so it's like a patio drinking slash area. So the reason they had to do the law consolidation was because they're going to put a bunch of seating, fire pits, and the bandstand on of seating, fire pits, and the bandstand on a property line, so obviously, we can't have infrastructure crossing property lines, so we have to ensure that those lots are consolidated prior to a development permit being issued for the creation of the cemented space. So, that's the application for you, and again, I can take any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Rosemary?
Thanks, Robert. I think it's a lovely development, but I am wondering about the condominiums in that area, and wondering about noise and hours of operation.
Correct. So, that's a good point. One of the, when we there announced, that was one of the points that we did state, was that from a many perspective, obviously, it works well, brings vibrancy, and connection to the outdoors and the street life. So, from a waterfront plan perspective, since it's own designated waterfront, it fulfills the intents and features of the plant. However, as was stated, there is a condominium that's constructed just on this side here, and the one here, all matters on this one here. So, effectively, with the outdoor amenity space being such close proximity to that, that could be implied potential feature of this space that could impact residents, where you might find it to be a nuisance. Standard hours, like I was talking to the board authority, because they're the ones that own the land, standard hours would apply to this outdoor amenity space, so effectively, when the Founders Food Market is shut, the amenity space would be, would be shut. There would be some instances where they would be looking to have later concerts, but it would not be frequently, they say. We also have noise filed as well in the city's Charlestown, so there's that to consider as well, but it's, there is residential funding at that.
Councilor Yankoff?
Thank you. Just wanting to vote, seeing an outdoor capacity, do we know, if we were in normal non-COVID times, what this consolidation would bring in terms of how many people would be permitted in that area?
Yes, very good point. It would expand the capacity itself, like they would be able to serve people through in the Founders Market, and then send them outdoors, and then, so that would allow for, I guess, increased occupancy, similar to what some of the bars were doing with their temporary patios, so that would provide some additional room, like occupant load in this case.
And just as a point of follow-up, I realize that because of, it's under the waterfront development plan, that asking the public, like Rosemary asked about wondering, it's not permitted, but is it something that we should be considering under these circumstances? Just with, you know, there's been a lot of controversy over the waterfront development plan lately, and I just wondered if the condo owners and the apartments and homeowners in that area are aware of this, and what their thoughts are, instead of just happening?
Yeah, so, because this was a law consolidation, wasn't on R3 or R4, condo, the condominium or owner's condominium were not circulated specifically with letters. Now, we did our advert document in paper, and printing the agenda online, but that's the extent of, of, of public outreach, but in this case, the bylaws does not require specific circulation lines to send out, so that was not, that was not done.
Getting back to Rosemary's question, Robert. Who's, is this, is this intended for patrons within the Founders Hall food area, just to move out onto with some entertainment, similar to Victoria Row? Is that the sort of setup, it's not a Nickelback concert venue?
No, I believe what the intention was, is that it was, yes, an extension of the Founders Food Hall and Market. So, the bands that would be playing, they would be going through Founders Hall, and then I guess the patron, patrons that would show up would be utilizing the amenity space and the services.
That was basically your question, what type of, Senator Hamley? Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir?
So, they'd have to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm like a ghost, basically, in the backseat, but this property, this property was formerly, it was a part of the larger property. The former developer severed it out, so he severed it out for his own purposes. It was Paul Madden that was dealing with it at that time, and he wanted, he wanted to maintain that walkway through the middle of the site, and because he was selling the Founders Hall. So, no, he was the one that severed it out, wasn't there for a long time, just going back to what was previous, the subject.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
So, they would have to exit back through Founders Hall, too, right? It wouldn't be like an entrance and an exit on the inside of the building?
Well, the amenity area itself is serviced by the boardwalk.
Yeah.
So, you know, again, one would look at that as a way for, I guess, someone from, from the public to enter into the site itself. Like, if you look back on the ortho photo, we do have, like, these extension boardwalks are all public, right? The public can use the boardwalks, and then we have the street up here, and the city owns this, where we turn into an ice rink in the winter months. So, it's still possible for, for members of the public to still enter into the amenity space itself. But yes, there is direct, there's direct linkages or connections and entrances connected with the amenity area and the Founders Hall. So, that, I don't believe that it's a scenario where someone has to go through Founders Hall to access the outdoor amenity space. I think they could access it through any means, but again, that's just from my tertiary knowledge, just talking to the applicant.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Chair, if you go down Victoria Row, you have to go on the sidewalk to enter the outdoor alleys. That's a way of controlling the, or the establishments on that, on that old red, or that Victoria Row area? Would it not be the same year, would they not fence it on the red line border on the park?
Yeah, we had no, this all started actually through a building and development permit. It was both an interior and exterior renovation permit, and as per their site plan, they made no reference to that they would be constructing a fence, or something to segregate or enclose that outdoor amenity space. So, I believe members of the public can still access, like I said, the city has a maintenance agreement over this, this boardwalk here, it's existing, that runs parallel with the, with the building itself, so they can still, I believe, access through that.
Mr. Chair, just a clarification, so go back to page 56, and you have the, the red area, which is a plot or a lot, correct? Page 56. See that division between the park? That's, that's a lot, correct?
That's correct, yeah. That's the shared property line, as it stands.
So, they're consolidating that with the Founders Hall?
Correct.
So, the green space that's on the north side of the boardwalk, will that be also outside dining area? Can we just enter from the front?
That's correct. So, as you can see or worship, this property line that runs along the building through here would then effectively become the red line.
Right.
With the law consolidation, and if you look at the proposal, that boardwalk that's situated here, that runs parallel to the building, all, all of the amenity outdoor amenity space would be contained self of that.
So, okay, then it's just green area on the, on the north side.
Correct. That would just still be green area.
Okay.
Like I said, anyone, anyone could theoretically access the boardwalk, because it's still public, right? So, anyone could still access it through this way, that way, or through that way.
So, they're not going anywhere into the green space?
No, no. They are, the entire many space is being contained to this portion here, with this boardwalk acting as, so to speak, as a border line.
And, Mr. Chair, just one last, back on page 56, the property that's self that lies between the condo and Founders Hall is a lot in itself, owned by, I think, Paul Murphy, that's the proposed eight-story hotel, Airbnb?
Paul Jenkins.
Paul Jenkins and Paul Murphy.
Oh, right.
That's the lot right there. That's owned by Paul Jenkins, and that's the proposed area for the eight-story hotel Airbnb.
Correct. I, I believe there's some sort of application, such as for terminals, but I haven't.
Mr. Chair. Okay.
So, this, the control of the Charlestown Harbor?
Yeah, the, correct, the Charlestown Harbor authorities is still the owner of the boardwalks.
So, they'd be responsible for the music and the park, and to know.
Councilor Kate?
Yeah, so that was quickly brought that up, because that was one of my kind of questions, that building, I had a bit of controversy, but the situation was, just wait, was, because you know, is that part of, is that going to cause more conflict than down the road? No one that resides some, like, some issues and concerns with that, but my, my thought is this application is for law consolidation only, right? At some point, will they have to come back and have a permit to put any kind of food beverage thing? Like, I'm thinking if we're thinking fence along the property line or something to shut it off, would that be something we could look at later on as far as?
So.
Because this is just a consolidation, this isn't anything to do with their food or their.
Correct. Yeah, this is, this is just a law consolidation, that's the nature of the application for you tonight, in regards to the actual construction that would be done through development building permit, which they have submitted, and this is where we came across it. So, our office received a building permit to create this amenity space, and then when we conducted our research into the property, we found that property line was dividing out their many areas, so that is why they have to go through law consolidation.
Right, so we wouldn't necessarily see the development, we wouldn't see the proposal if we had approved this, so they could, so you wouldn't have a chance to say, yeah, you can, but you need to put a fence over it. Because if we approved this, they can just go and do it, basically.
Correct. Through the law consolidation, they would be able to construct the amenity area, yes. They would need the law consolidation award to construct the amenity area.
And one last question, if there's some council work, if you have any?
I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
You go ahead. No, go ahead.
No, my question is, do you have concerns and questions?
Well, I have a lot, I have a lot of questions, because it's, once again, I, like, I mean, I certainly support that this goes back for council to have discussion, but I think there's a lot of information that I know I want more information, and I understand that this is just a law consolidation, but if it's for a long-term concept of music and potential noise, that I have concerns for my residents, and that I wouldn't be able to support it without additional information. So, that's just kind of where I am with it. And I don't know if you have any more of that information, because really, all you're asking us to do now is to approve a law consolidation, which then will create a domino effect of a whole lot of other things that I don't know enough about for me to even reach out to my residents and ask them what they, what they have to say.
Great, right, they can just go and do it, there's no more discussion.
There is no more discussion, it just happens. You know, and although I'm a huge supporter of outdoor activities and things for everyone, but it needs to be harmonious for the residents and, and those that come to visit our beautiful city.
I wouldn't think it was as a right. I think it'd be as a right according to our bylaws.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean, and that, like, without any, like, there'd be no opportunity, I guess, to look at ways of doing it right, or maybe better in the long term. Yes, they fit our bylaws, but I don't think our bylaws are perfect by any means, so I think.
But it's not as a right.
No, no, as a right, meaning that they don't have to come back looking, clarify that, they don't have to come back looking for any further permission or.
Once we say yes to the law consolidation, then it's as a right.
Right, without any.
Is that correct, Robert?
They.
So, if we say yes to this, then whatever their plans are for outdoor.
They fix that.
It's done, they can do that.
They, yes.
Based on their, on city bylaws.
As soon as the consolidation is completed, then they would meet all requirements under, under like a permitting process, and then we would issue the permit for the, for the amenity space.
Correct. I love the idea of this, I love the idea of more city gathering and opportunity in the summer, but I just feel that we always seem to get jammed in the situation sometimes, where we make decisions or we vote quickly and don't have all the information.
Chair.
So, you basically want a development agreement to accompany the law consolidation, is that?
Or, or better understanding, it's hard to say, just to see what the plan is.
There's a tract of land down there called Commemoration Landing, and it has, you know, it's a large tract of land, and they put on various things down there, private and public, and there's rules and regulations to which they have to abide, and these people would also, but there'd be no different rules for these folks, laxer or stricter, like it'd be life rules.
Right.
So, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, I know what you're saying, if they have a band fest down there, and they're going to 3:30 in the morning to eat hard rock bands, I know, they don't want that, I understand that.
Right.
But I think our rules of, of living within the city, we, like, through Frank, Frank Queen and his Parks and Recreation being around there, very strict rules that you have to abide by when you're renting or leasing the commemorative park. But anyway, quick, or development agreement. I'll get back to you in one sec, I'd be great to delay for the.
That's okay, no, I'm just listening.
The process that we follow here, with our bylaws and our application rules for consolidations or whatever they choose to apply for, we don't put stipulations on some and not others. The rules are written, and when they apply for something, it's how you do it. So, they're applying for a law consolidation. We, we can't guess everything that they're going to do, or what they're going to do, but we have to say, because it makes sense. It's a law consolidation, no different than the one we just approved previously, you know? That's how you look at law consolidations.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, the issue of compatibility between what you're consolidating, that is already embedded in the existing zoning. You should be, you know, would be likely more concerned if you're consolidating and then changing the use on the consolidated property, because it will change those, but these things are allowed already in the zone, in the zone in that area, so the law consolidation, again, this was, this was done administratively for no express purpose other than the previous developer wanted, there's no renal and magic and wipes created, now they just want to, the new order wants to bring it back to what it was before.
Forgive me for being hesitant, trying to make sure I feel like I comprehend and understand, where we just are with little things, for me, sometimes I feel like I catch.
But the zone deals with the, the limited uses, the law consolidation, the purpose when we bring law consolidation forward is just to give you a general idea of what they're intending to do, cup of the use component, unless you saw some really egregious reason what they were doing, let's say they wanted to plow down, you know, five historic houses to consolidate it, that, that treads on a whole lot of other issues that they may want to take into consideration, but I don't know what that helps.
But, Mr. Chair, just on the uses, I think you hit the nail on the head, the Commemorative Park, you're talking to this Confederation Landing.
Yes.
Correct? And there are stipulations on hours of operation for private-public concerts. This would apply to Founders Hall.
Sure.
Correct, Robert?
That's, that's correct, like.
Yeah, so 10 o'clock, you shut it down.
Still.
I think the rules are very clear, you shut it down at 10 o'clock, at the event's ground, I think it's a lot of.
Same, same for Peak's Key?
Yeah.
Same for anybody down there providing entertainment, good, good by the rules of the land.
And I suppose this is, probably has nothing to do with the law consolidation, Chair, but, so that would then factor in, if there is, if there's a small concert series happening on Confederation Landing, we're not going to drown one out with another concert series in front of Founders Hall and have this constant racket ricocheting off the hall of our neighbors, like harmonious.
Yeah. Uses, yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
But could we, Robert, you're certain on that, that the, the uses of Confederation Landing, Peak's Key would also apply to?
Yeah, it's all, it's all program space that's permitted.
In the waterfront.
Yeah. It tops to have vibrancy, do we emit some uses encourages outdoor amenity space, and actual program spaces that, like concerts and music festivals, so there's a lot of policies that line up with what they're proposing on doing.
And, Mr. Chair, I would just comment, it's unfortunate that the applicant isn't here tonight, because the applicant should be clarifying those issues with you. Robert's doing his very best with the information he has, but it's ideally, you know, the applicants have got to realize that they're coming to this body and asking you for approval, it's in their interest to be answering this one.
Absolutely, fair point.
Councilor Kate?
Just one final, would it be, would it be appropriate for us to defer for additional information and invite the applicant here, or is that an appropriate process? I, you know, I don't want to slow down the process, but I also want to be sure, Robert, are you 100% sure that we have all the information that we need to make the right decision for the residents of Charlestown?
If, if you wish to defer, and since the applicant's here tonight, that is a perfectly reasonable conclusion to defer, so the applicant's here to provide with more information on the programming of the space, yes?
As the mayor says, you can never have too much information.
You move to defer?
I would like to defer, yeah.
So, we have a motion, moved by Councilor Yankoff, seconded by Mayor Brown, that the application to consolidate two lots on the waterfront at 726 Prince Street, PID 739128, and Lot 17-3, Biggin' Lot, PID 739128, be deferred.
Consultation with the owner. Oh, it'd be deferred in, in, in order to have the applicant present, for you to answer the, or ask him to answer the question. Uh, be deferred in, in, in order to have the applicant present, for you to ask the, and, or ask and answer the questions that you're asking.
We can, we can dress it up.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, we all know what we mean. Robert, you have a question?
So just for a point clarification, too, I believe that, um, the applicant might send a representative, which is, uh, part of an archi, for a local architecture firm, so they might send someone just to explain the programming of the space, so...
Yeah, the applicant or a representative.
Yeah, it might not be the board authority themselves.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, we have that motion on the floor, do we have any further discussion on the motion? Okay, ready for the question? All those in favor? All those opposed? Uh, we have one opposed, so, so that would be a seven-one count. We have eight here, two, five, eight, three, yeah. Yeah, not, so it's eight, uh, seven-one of that, that vote, seven-one to defer. Okay, uh, Reg, you have a question?
That just brings me to the, uh, the number of voting bodies we have in this board. How many people are on, like, I'm looking at through some of the old minutes, and there's different numbers every time it votes.
Well, there's five...
Who's actually on this, uh...
There's five elected people and six resident members.
Okay.
A total of eleven. Uh, and of course, I don't vote unless it's a tie, so we're down to, if everybody's here, ten.
It's ten.
Yeah, so we, tonight, we had ten-zero on three, and, uh, because there's one absent, we would have, uh, eight-one on the last one.
So we're missing, Councilor Twill?
Shal, Mr. Twill.
Councilor Twill.
No, we're missing, we're missing someone.
From the board, no, one, two, three, four, five, six, six board members.
Yeah, six board men, four, four elected candidates are here, Councilor Twill is not.
Councilor Twill, okay.
Yeah, but right now, Shal, for this vote, wasn't here either. So we're missing two for that vote only.
Yeah.
So we're down to nine, uh, for those at that vote, and ten for the other three, right?
Yeah.
No, nine for the other three. I, oh, I'm present, but I don't vote.
Right.
Only if there's time.
Okay. Okay, folks, I think that brings us to the end of, uh, our submissions. We move back to the, the agenda. At the point here, if I was pointing at here. Anybody got some new business, new business? Great, great. Uh, could I have a motion to adjourn? Move by Councilor Yank, uh, McCabe, and seconded by, uh, Bob Kenny, that we adjourned. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, carry on.